Unless you traded anything recently.
Called me to order, it was the ordinance and the pledge to the fine of this attorney. We pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the principles of justice, our nation under God, indivisible, and just liberated and just for all. Thank you.
Welcome. I appreciate everybody coming out to the meeting tonight. And we will get started right on our agenda with a few announcements prior to that. I should probably all know agendas are available in the back of the room if you didn't get one when you came in. We do video record all of our meetings as this one's being recorded and it will be posted on our website. Written minutes will also be available on the website and that will happen after they're approved by the board. Any individual has the right to record those proceedings. You just would have to do that in a way that it not interferes with the meeting. There will be two opportunities for public comment. There's a policy attached to your agenda for that. And we would ask that after you're recognized by the chair, you would come to the microphone in front of the board and give us your name and address before speaking to the board. And with that, we'll do a self-introduction of the board.
Dean Burns.
Ann Maxwell.
Mike Rockley.
Paul Solomon.
Jeff Reynolds.
To my left, we have Tom Ziegler, our Township Manager, Steve McDonald, who is sitting in the solicitor tonight, and Andy Brown, who is our recording secretary. And I also have with us Bob Brown at Under the Clock, who is supervisor elect and will be sitting up here next meeting. Also want to announce that we had an executive session immediately prior to this meeting. And it was held to discuss the manager's performance evaluation, manager's goals for 2020, 2020 employee rate, wage and salary increases, and 2020 appointments to various boards and committees. With that, we'll go to the agenda and we'll start with a group of few minutes for our new governor meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the new government meeting.
I'll second that. Any questions or comments? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative. The minutes are approved. Now before you, this treasurer's report for approval. I might just comment that it was nice to see quarterly franchise fees for the two K companies was about 14,000. And again, due to moving some money around a few meetings ago, I guess maybe several meetings now, but we have about $6,000 of interest earned for the month. Questions or comments on the report?
Yeah, I can see that yet.
Did you ask to see it?
No, I can see it from here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that your motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Five votes to the affirmative. The treasurer's report is approved. We've reached the first opportunity for a public comment and Phil Andrew is here.
Do I have to come up? I've got a bad kidney. I can't stand it.
So if you talk loud, I guess we...
Okay, I'm going to the hospital Friday to get it fixed. Okay. First, I'd like to thank Paul. I'd like to thank Paul Solomon for his eight years of service. I think he did a beautiful job. I would personally thank Paul Solomon.
Thank you, John.
That's what I wanted to do. That's where my law firm, Where the Arrow is. I've done a little research and I've been told that they changed the old village of Seisling 15 years ago from village center and put it all in rural residential. Okay? But across the street from my place there, all those people used to be in village center and they put them in suburban residential. That's Pleasant Valley Road. You've got the creek. It comes up off of Baldwin Street and it comes up behind all them lots. And that's between, yeah, yeah, right there, Todd. That's between Calm World Landscape. I'd like to know if we could get that line changed from Pleasant Valley Road and have that to the back of them lots.
You're talking about these lots here, correct?
Yes. I mean, why did they put my neighbors across the street in suburban residential and put me in rural residential? And you were involved with sewer now.
Well, the sewer was actually a requirement
Right.
by the Department of Environmental.
Okay.
So that was
Okay.
That was basically because, I guess, the condition of all lot sewage in that area, that was mandated.
Mandated. And they did the houses across the street from me, the three houses across the street from me. Therefore, that sewer.
Now, the historic district is just an overlay, isn't it?
Correct.
It's not a zone.
Yeah, all this, I apologize. This is in the scan. But this area here is a little darker shade of the tannish yellow. So we're talking about this real pale area here. And this is the Seisling Historic Village Overlay has the red border around it. But first and foremost, you look at the rural residential regulations. But then the overlay gives you some additional flexibility. But again, that's only within this area here that's outlined with the red.
So what's between the historical district, so-called, and the Calm World Landscape?
Pleasant Valley.
Yeah, this little strip here?
Yeah, that's Elastica.
Yeah, that's rural residential. Yeah, the street kind of runs down around.
No, that's rural residential. Oh, yes. That used to be your new house building.
So the trail runs right along there.
Yeah, the trail's this here. It's covered up a little bit, but everyone's familiar with the property of Dave Keller. That's in the historic, everybody.
Because Elastica, the business, or they started by Bubba Shore.
They are, yes.
Now, you recently purchased that property, right?
Yes, I did, in April.
In April?
Yes, exactly.
And I think, as I understood, the reason you want to look at that recently is so you can subdivision
I think the lot.
The property, because
It's 311 feet of residential.
You don't have the front footage to let you do it in rural residential. Where in suburban residential, it's under Rusty.
Right.
How are your neighbors? We all, we're talking to neighbors about the...
They don't see why the neighbors across the street, they can't understand why they put them in suburban residential and didn't put me in suburban residential.
I guess there's always a dividing line somewhere.
Well, you've got the creek right down behind me there. I mean, you've got a natural property.
So we're just looking at this four properties to be rezoned.
Those four.
The four on the other side of the street.
Yes. What was your thought about?
There is no public water, just public sewer, correct?
It's public sewer, right.
And you're, so those lots are right next to the Elastica business?
No, you've got the creek there.
As far as the property boundaries concern?
Yes, right, yes.
And then you go over through Elastica property and you come into, what's that sound?
Village Sound.
No, it's sound.
Village Sound or Village.
Sort of, yes.
Whatever it was, it's...
You're talking about this area, Paul? Yeah, that's the...
Contingency, contingency is very important. Todd, is that qualified for rural residential, Dave?
But I guess...
I think neither qualifies for rural residential.
So, Todd, doesn't, I'm sorry, I may need to jump in. Doesn't suburban residential say public water and public sewer?
No.
Which one, the suburban residential?
Yeah. Does it require both?
So we're both, we're both public water and public sewer?
It says must utilize public water and public sewer unless the developer demonstrates.
Right.
And I will, will note that if we look back in the national requirements in that zone, for single-family homes, they have setbacks and different regulations for lots that have public water and public sewer. Then they have different dimensions for public water for public sewer and then without.
Right, without public water and sewer.
For suburban residential, you have, if you do not have public water and public sewer, it's 150-foot of road frontage required. The current zone requires 200 feet of road frontage, rural residential. You need to require 100-foot of road frontage if you have public water or public sewer. And if you have both, it's 80 feet. Currently, to subdivide, you'd be required to have that lot, it would be required to be at least 400 feet of road frontage. 200 feet each lot. If it was rezoned that area into suburban residential, minimum would be 100 feet of road frontage.
And basically, the decision before the board is whether or not they even want to pursue this. If so, it would go staff, planning commission, York County, advertised, and here and here and all that.
I'd like to hear what some other folks in the area have to think.
So if it gets to section four lots, correct?
But I'm the only one that can cut a lot off. The guy beside me just built a four-tiered garage five or six years ago, right, Paul? I mean, Todd?
I don't think it's more recent than that, but I ain't, okay.
And he, he'll just sewer up to his garage. He has no, no place to cut a lot off. The two other people, you know, on the other side of me, they don't have their own frontage.
Okay.
So I'm the only one that can do it.
You make it difficult for me, feel, because you said the last thing about me at the beginning. Because whatever I do, in favor, you just say, well, Paul sure felt for that. Well, I didn't. I usually end up like that. I don't think this is really rural residential applied, no public water or sewer, and not, not in the future, actually.
I don't think it's rural residential.
Well, you have to agree with me.
Right. I think it's suburban residential, just like my neighbors across the street.
Anyway. It needs to be commented for suburban residential. And it's like spot designed to have rural residential in there. The way, it's a very small area of rural residential. And that's up shore, so that's my thinking at this point.
Senator Paul, what's your opinion?
Yeah, you lost me.
Yeah, I got lost.
Well, come on, I can't, here, too.
You're saying it's just a small...
Are you saying you support or don't support?
I would support, let's change from rural to suburban residential.
You would?
I would.
And I feel the same way because, because right across the street is suburban residential. You've got the creek there for a line. He has sewer, you know. So I'd be in favor of letting it go through staff and see what the planning commission, everybody comes back with.
I think we should at least get the process started, see where it goes.
John.
We're not committed to...
We can't say definitively one way or another until we hear from all the parties involved and any implications. But I would support going down that route and seeing where it leads.
So the only motion we would be considering to know if somebody wants to make that would be to forward the request onto the planning commission and have them review it, send it on to the planning commission. I'm sorry, to stay up first and then...
Stay up and then, how many got motion?
Right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? And just so you know, what the vote is, just to move it on, drag process, not to approve it at this time.
Exactly.
We shall vote now.
Aye.
I'm going to say no, and not because I'm necessarily opposed to what you want to do. I'd just like to hear some input from your neighbors and just make sure because I'm voting.
I'll, I'll say aye on the basis of that any of these other processes should be able to bring that information forward either forward to the planning commission.
Aye. I hear you, all right. I'm going to vote aye as well.
Aye. Four votes to the affirmative and one negative, so we will, we will move it on to the next step of a fairly long process.
Thank you.
Would anybody else wish to address the board at this time? Come on, four.
Hello, Mark, Mark J. Shrews, we're going to Mark on. I just want to take this moment to thank Paul for his years of service as a supervisor and a township. The words of services in the area appreciate your efforts to help us and help the community. And I personally, I want to say that I've definitely more educated in planting some trees because of you.
Thank you, you're welcome. I appreciate that.
You plant those trees.
I'm worried.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Todd. Anybody else wishes to address the board? If you want to.
Who's this guy? Hey, James, Farsh Lake. I would also like to thank Paul for his years of service. His commitment to the open environment, planting trees and et cetera. And for your advice he gave to me over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Anyone else? Can you read this?
Please.
All right. Well, everybody else, I'd like to thank you, Paul. So the board would like to do that as well. I have a citation here that we'll be presenting to Paul right now. And I'm going to read it because it will be read into the minutes then. Whereas the Shrewsbury Township Board of Supervisors is pleased to acknowledge the retirement of Paul J. Solomon. And that's all it says. Oh, no, no, there's more.
I'll take it right, yeah.
To acknowledge the retirement of Paul J. Solomon as an elected member of the Board of Supervisors. And whereas upon Paul's retirement on January 6th, 2020, he once served 18 years on the board, six of those as chair. And whereas Paul has also served on the Shrewsbury Township Planning Commission and was instrumental in developing zoning regulations for the preservation and maintenance of critical environmental areas, which is beneficial in protecting local public waterways in the Chesapeake Bay. And whereas farmland and open space preservation within Shrewsbury Township has been and continues to be of the utmost importance to Paul, as demonstrated by his leadership. And now therefore, the Shrewsbury Township Board of Supervisors extend our sincere thank you to Paul for the dedicated service he provided to the township. Furthermore, a copy of this citation publicly read at the December 4th, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting and incorporated into the official minutes of that meeting, as hereby presented, to Mr. Solomon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Been a good member to me of all the early years, too, so I appreciate that.
Privilege to the honest, I think, I would go out with a little jab in my car. It misses a wealth of change and certainly an improvement. And it's been, I was going to say pleasure, but at times it has often been a pleasure. But most of the time, it's been productive and constructive. It helps when you're working for good people. That's what things should go on in. Our township is full of good people, so thank you very much.
We do have actually a big cake that we invite anybody who would like to stay after the meeting to have a piece of cake.
How do you call a hyatt?
It's a large shaped cake. We'll bring everything out afterwards, so please stay. You'll enjoy what's over there.
There's plenty for you, Todd.
I have, I have to put this back to add. We'll need that back, Paul, because we don't have the official signatures on like that. And the other thing is, we thought it was too much to bring their gift in here, so we took a photograph of it and I'm just going to shoot it on the wall because I keep your copy during your retirement. You just have to run up to the ambiation. That was a little much to bring them into the meeting. We'll deliver it tomorrow. We'll drop them.
I didn't plan it to you. The words were simply...
These are tame. They're indoor. They're outdoor.
But in all seriousness, you do.
And I do just want to add that, you know, I have the privilege of working with Paul all along for most of eight years. December 1st, that was eight years for me, and I had the privilege of working with Paul. He taught me a lot as well. And the board, you know, as a whole, is a very good cooperative board. And Paul was instrumental in helping bring you that cohesiveness that you see today. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, Todd. That's my words.
But your work's not done yet, so I can say...
Deep attack.
Well, we got to do some things. All right. Moving to the next item on the agenda, we have, I think everybody addressed the board at this time if wanted to. All right. We have some orders and resolutions. I don't know if you want to introduce them or if we just, we're pretty much on board on both of the first two.
Yeah, this is, Ann, Art and I have spent many hours of meetings and red pens and edits and so forth and updating both our safety manual as well as our personnel policy. So the three of us have finalized that and we've actually presented it to the board last month. It's authorized the resolutions to formally adopt that as our revised manuals and policies, so.
And I would note that we also had attorney review the personnel manual. There were some revisions that were done, which is all attorney review. And my personal thanks to Todd and to Ann. This has been a year-long process and we've really gotten a lot more than we thought we would have started. But the finished product is there and hopefully we're ready to vote on that. I think we can just do both of them at the same time. I would make the motion that we adopt resolution 2019-10 and -11, which is approval of the safety manual and personnel manual as amended.
I'll second.
Comments from anybody?
I just want to thank you two for, I think, a lot of meetings, a lot of work. Good thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay? Ready to vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, so you see they're fairly thick documents, so we'll take them. They are both now approved. We have another resolution, Todd, that I guess sets the real estate and fire protection tax.
Yeah, I can, just a quick little graph here. The current, the 2019 fire tax is currently set at 3.4 mils. The budget which will be passed later reflects...
0.34 mils.
3.4 mils would be...
0.34 mils. Just so we're all the same.
Tony would hate me related to 3.4 mils.
0.34 mils. This resolution passes and it'll be reflected in the budget to be adopted a little later here. The fire tax will increase to 0.46 mils. And what that equates to for the average residential home that's assessed in the township at $188,313, that'll work out to about $23 a year increase. What, sorry, what you see here is our current system for distribution of what the fire tax generates through 2019 and previous years. What we do currently is it's split equally among the three volunteer fire companies that serve Shrewsbury Township. At the time that we reviewed this, and it was proposed last year and we spent about a year reviewing it and so forth. With the increase, there was a discussion and the board decided that we would change that formula instead of splitting it equally three ways because some departments have larger call volume, some departments protect a greater assessed value of the township. So without getting into all the weeds and the details with it, what the new fire tax beginning this year of 2020, when we do distributions, again, these amounts are before we would deduct any tax collector commissions. Or some of the boroughs invoice us for our portion of the workers' comp for the fire companies. That comes out as well. So we're projecting for Glen Rock to go from 63,000 to 70,000. Rose Fire Company would go from 63,000 to roughly 86,000. And Shrewsbury Fire Company would go from 63,000 to about 118,000 through this. What I want to show here is the 2020, this is as of January, it's certainly next year to change with the school. But as for other municipalities, I don't, I don't know what we're going to do. But currently, just looking at our real estate tax, which goes into the general fund, not including the fire tax. Shrewsbury Township out of the 72 municipalities in York County, we are the lowest in the county at 0.074 mils. Even when you add the 0.46 mils to that real estate tax bill, comes out to 0.534. We are the ninth lowest out of 72, which I think is still something for the board to feel good about. So I just want to share that. And then also, just want to update this. You know, again, this is based on the average assessed home at 188,000. Of that $4,844 in real estate taxes that you pay with the fire tax, you'll pay Shrewsbury Township $101 total.
I think it bears noting, too, that one of the few things that townships are mandated to provide is fire protection. You must provide it some way, shape or form. There's no choice. And it's becoming very difficult to sustain volunteer firefighters. We're hoping that this helps to do that because if we had to start paying for a paid fire company, that chart would look a lot different, I can guarantee you. And we have Tony and two other fire departments to thank for keeping the taxes even as low as they are. So this is a pretty crucial requirement. Just to give you a couple numbers, New Freedom will be buying a ladder truck before long. It's about a million two tons, something like that. You're getting ready in the next year or two to acquire a new rescue truck or retire it when you have. That's getting close to a million, eight, nine hundred thousand. Glen Rock first bought a tanker and I think they're ordering an engine that's around 600?
Uh, 400.
400. And you notice they've done that. There's only one ladder truck. That's at New Freedom. There was one rescue truck. At Shrewsbury, there was one tanker. At Glen Rock. So that they don't all have to have one of those. So even the fire companies have tried to do some things together to keep costs down. So just some explanations as to why we're where we are with that tax.
We're very fortunate to have our volunteer force that we have in this area.
Absolutely.
And I think people will take it for granted because of being here so long. And if it was gone overnight, it was gone over a pretty time, I think it'd be a great wake-up call. Appreciate your work, Johnny, and all the others who serve us here in this area.
So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2019-12 that sets the real estate tax at no change, continues to where it was, and an increase in the fire tax.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Five votes to the affirmative. Resolution 2019-12 is approved. Subdivision and land development. Do you have a request for a bottom reduction, Todd?
Yeah, you recall, we have to act on this for 45 days of requests. We did have, Jeff Schu was out, I guess about a week and a half ago to do an inspection of the White Cell, which everyone recalls is all the taller area. See five homes, factor the cul-de-sac. What he had found to date, the outstanding items, it's not a lot. Conversion of the infiltration trench from ENS mode to its permanent state includes removing the geotextile material and so forth. And then it talks about in addition, developers should confirm that the notice of termination has been completed for the MPDES permit associated with the site. Placing of lot markers, including concrete monuments, as noted on the approved subdivision plan. And the individual light posts on each lot, in accordance with the approved plans, states that they're supposed to be at the end of the driveway and they're all in by the front door, front porches. So I don't know how the property owners feel about that. So we'll have to talk to them. So we'll have to talk to them and.
That could be in both locations too. It's not easy to.
Correct. That's correct. So there are the three things that the, that the engineer found. As you may recall, one of the meetings, there was some concern about the final wearing course on the street. According to the township's construction and materials manual, they are permitted to place a lane and I'll call it binder. That's, as Jeff Schu pointed out, that's the old school language, but that's what I still know. Put the binder course on because our order states it's just required to be a dust free for a private road. They were required to put 35 feet of a wearing course from Toner Road back into that street. And that was part of the pen dot occupancy permit, so that's been done. So there, there's nothing that the township can do. It was done within accordance of our regulations. The only other thing that while it's not under our security, and I'll get with Charlie tomorrow or Anthony me or whoever, is there is a manhole with Shrewsbury that needs a riser on it and some fill brown to bring that up to get away from some bonding. But they're the only items. So we do have a cash bond at the amount of $4,570.50. At this point in time, I would ask that the board deny releasing that bond amount. And hopefully these items can be addressed before next meeting and I can bring it back at that time. Or when they let me know if they've been.
I have a question. Are all those houses sold now?
Yeah, they're all sold and occupied.
All five, right. Five, right.
Little six.
White cells live there, then there's four new houses.
Four new houses, the original owners.
This one here was the original owner, the White Cells. And then the, this one, this one, this one and this one are the new houses.
Questions from the board? I'll make a motion that we deny release of the bond at this time for the reasons I stated. I'll second that. For the questions.
Do we have an idea when they plan to have a corrective?
No, we'll, we'll have to talk to the developer, which is actually the White Cells. And at some point in time, we'll have to set a deadline if they don't comply and. Call a bond. But our, our first objection is that they're doing.
Sure.
Yeah.
And the, the properties have been sold and they are.
Yeah, they've been occupied for.
Occupied, yeah.
At least a year.
Yeah. Honestly, I thought we were just submitting to get the bond release. I thought everything was done. You know, we've been in, had previous releases on some of these items and so. This is the first one here. It's not like we haven't.
Yeah, none of them are, none of them are major.
Yeah, I just, I thought we, I wasn't expecting any of these comments at first on here, so.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
So we have a motion?
In a second, I believe.
Second is true.
I am ready to vote.
It's true.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative and have denied the bond release at this time. Hopefully it'll come up fairly quickly again. We have modification requests and our, our corrupt word to date for, it used to be waivers, but for the Sussex Place subdivision plan. And Todd, maybe I would suggest, there are 12 of them here. All 12 have been recommended for approval by staff and all the two were recommended for approval by the planning commissions. But even those two are covered by a memorandum of agreement that has been established some time ago, a legal binding document. I might suggest that rather than go through all 12, we would just, if the board has questions on any specific one, we would have either Charlie address those and otherwise we could just go home as a bundle of things. And one comment that we did clarify is there was a question about sidewalks going to the north side and they're, they're not asking for any waiver on that. I think they're going all the way up to the north side, if I'm correct.
Yeah, the waiver request that you had before you, their proposal was to bring the sidewalk around and just around the radius of the curve there. This is Mount Eric Road and Wal-Mart's up this direction. For a waiver for the sidewalks along here and down this direction toward Whitney Hill Road, staff and planning commission, both are recommending that that request be denied in the sense that they be required to bring the sidewalk up to the property line. But in that same motion acknowledging that that waiver request does not apply to what I call Lot 51, the residual lot, that we will address that. There's going to be two additional phases. So I think they're going to withdraw all of that.
Yeah, we, we agree to that, that the sidewalk to the north, we would go ahead and put in. It's just a waiver for the sidewalk on phase three and we'd address it at that time. Instead of building that sidewalk now, there's nothing there. We would do it at the time that we do that process. So it's just a waiver for that phase until that phase comes up.
Mr. Chairman, the planning commission approved all but two of the waivers. And those two apparently, from what I understand, are covered by the memorandum of understanding, so they cannot be waived.
That's correct. Yes, there's a, just for the people that are out there, this has been going on since 2011 or before, but a different board at that time did not respond promptly in accordance with the legal requirements to approve a plan and that that becomes deemed approved, which means it's approved automatically. And there were a lot of issues on both sides and to try to get through a lot of legal stuff, we sat down around the table more than once and wound up with an agreement, term the memorandum of understanding, reduce the number of houses by 20, which is pretty significant. And some other changes that probably none of us were totally elated, but both agreed you could walk away and live with that. So the real reason for these modification requests is to document those decisions that were covered in the memorandum of agreement. So that 20 years from now, if somebody wonders why the heck did that happen, the drawing will document all that with the modification request. That's, that's the real reason for that. So I don't think we can go through them all, but are there any other questions on specific ones? If not, I would make a motion to reapprove, I guess it's still 12 waivers because was the one with the sidewalk for a waiver?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're withdrawing that. I think the waiver request that then you can put on that waiver that's on there would just be a notation filled that, that that waiver request applies only to phases two, three or whatever.
I think the waiver still needs to be done because realistically, that would be frontage and we would have to do the sidewalk the whole length. The one that, you know, so.
We're normally phases by phases now, basically.
So we would change that to just say that we're not requesting a waiver on the north side of the property, but on, at phase three at this time, the frontage along phase three. So it's still the same. It needs to be approved because the whole road frontage is there and without the waiver, we have to put the sidewalk in the whole length of that road, which doesn't make sense right now because we're not doing that right now.
But we need to change it so it doesn't say there.
What I would recommend, because the plan that you had before us, and even though Phil and Charlie acknowledge you're going to revise a plan and show that, what you have before you now doesn't show it. So I think your motion should, for the sidewalk, state that you deny the request for phase one.
Right. I agree.
And that you grant the request for phase three. However, it'll be addressed at the time. The redevelopment plan is approved by, does that make sense?
Perfect sense.
All right. I will make my motion conditional upon the comments that Todd just made. I'm trying to repeat all that, that, that we would approve. We would approve all the waivers then, except we're still going to deny. We're still denying that one, right?
We're still denying three to 12. There were a couple letting them know of understanding.
Now, three, 12, those were the, we have clear says denial or recommendations from the planning commission.
We have to approve those.
But they are part of the memorandum of understanding. If we already agreed to the sign.
Yeah, those two can't, can't really be denied. Okay. So I will make the motion for approval in accordance with Todd, the comments you made about it will be number nine. Right?
Which is denial phase one and approval phase three being addressed at the time of that plan.
Phase three, sorry, which is denial of the phase one, correct. All the rest will be approved.
I'll second that.
Questions, colleagues? Ready to vote?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. I'm sure if you want denial, it's be noted. All right, we have, oh, we have a, a planning reapproval here?
Yeah, you have the information for any, this is kind of a formal, you want the plan expected completed. Bank need a chance to make sure everything's going to address, but so your reapproval would be for an additional three months. The change to say you will have that.
And it's reapproved with all those conditions.
Existing conditions, correct.
Reapproved with existing conditions.
As outlined in my.
Right.
Letter to New Freedom, 2018, CS 82.
Questions? I'll make them.
I can make the motion to approve with the conditions that stated in the November 2018, 2018 letter.
Thank you. I'll second. Further questions?
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. Your approval is approved. We have a public sewer agreement. This is a three-way agreement with New Freedom Borough, the Township and the Church of Jesus Christ of Labor Day Saints. Correct?
Correct.
Pretty standard. The only, really mostly between the church and New Freedom Borough, we're just allowing it to happen again.
Correct.
Eight inches standard size, Senator Silver? Eight inches standard size?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's ordered up for the church and that's all been reviewed by New Freedom Borough, who owns the sewer system, so they would approve, they actually approved the agreement, so that's acceptable.
I make the motion that we approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion in second. Any questions? We shall move.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative. We approve. And then we'll have some reports to look at. And first one is the manager's report. Comments you want to answer?
Two quick things, three things. Last month, the, there was a question on the Ag Security Area acreage and parcels and everything. Yeah, we were off a little bit, Paul.
You know, a lot.
I, I love Excel. Anyone that uses it's a wonderful tool. However, if some of the cells are formatted incorrectly, it doesn't always add up, so.
Todd, anyway, I, I need to say something here.
Yes.
To your credit, I think you, you wanted to see if we were reading your reports.
I was.
And that's a great way of knowing.
I wanted to see if my work was appreciated. So I have correct numbers for you. Currently in the Ag Security Program, there is exactly 100 parcels. And the total acreage in Shrewsbury Township, because some of those parcels spill over into, like, Coke Well or Springfield or Kedore's Township, there's a total of 6,135 acres for an average parcel size of 61 acres. And the other thing, just as a point of interest, is the Ag District, there's an additional 1,108 parcels that are not in the Ag Security Area. But also keep in mind, there's still a lot of individual holes and smaller lots in the Ag District, which totals 8,730 acres for roughly eight acres of parcels, so. So I just wanted to give you this clarification.
Thank you.
The other thing was, the sign was installed at Haytown Park for the Trail for Trees.
Okay.
That's, that's there.
Oh, that's.
So that's.
I have to clarify. I thought we were talking about the pedestrian side.
I know.
I think we, we selected, I met with Jim Holly and we selected a location near the pavilion in one of our land state areas, so if you're out traveling around, stop down, read it, date it. Uh, thank you. The, just wanted to, Art had asked a question, raised a question about the wellhead protection program with Shrewsbury Borough. And on that report we have, I think there's a total of nine wells that have been closed in the last two years. If you recall, there's 18 wells within the wellhead protection district that have been grandfathered, that are not, uh, even be closed. Of the list of binder, three of those are on that list of grandfathered wells. So that grandfathered well is dropped out. And the last thing, just, just an FYI, make you aware of, nothing we need to do. I made that a little more easier.
Take care.
Take care.
Yep.
You too. This here is.
Okay, notebook there.
Yeah. This is a clear, less clear view. Uh, this is Board Court. Moves up through here and then this brings you around and then this is site slip here. So if you recall, Board Court, there's a bridge that we need to replace as a result of a flood. And that is a dead end road. I believe it's a total of six or seven.
Something like that.
Yeah. It holds up through there. So of course, when we go to replace that, it's going to be a recast concrete box called. So it's going to be closed for about 10 days. We don't have a schedule yet at this point in time. So I just want to let you know that we are talking and working with this farmer here.
Randy.
Yeah, we're actually working with his grandson.
Well, Randy Allison.
Allison, isn't that his first name? So Mike is working with him to see if we can work something out to allow those residents, so there's 10 days to use that as an egress, egress for Board Court. I will bring that back once we have something together, but just want to let you know if you have any problems, we are talking to them and trying to resolve that.
And we think we might have to do some stonings and so forth.
Right. That's what, that's what I said. You know, they already have.
I know.
Good pathway down through there, some stone, but you know, Mike's going to talk to him, see if we'll probably, we'll, we'll have to add some more stones and so forth. And you know, even if we have to do a little bit of painting or something up around there to, or a little rubber up here, it's far less expensive than us having to install a temporary bridge.
How, how long is the repair supposed to take?
It'll be down about 10 days.
While we're on the subject, do we have a summary sheet of the Labor Day storms? How much rain we got and the nature of the damage? Not just every, every road that was closed, but do we have some sort of summary on that?
That was from this flood?
Yeah, on Labor Day flood, probably $19,100. Do we have a, for the entire township, do we have a summary? Has there, I know some causes around like five million.
No. No.
Yeah.
It is one point three million max. Um, to answer that question, yes. We, Wendy kind of has been tracking that in spreadsheet when she processes invoices and so forth. So we do have a summary of that.
So it'd be a lot, not a lot to me to ask for a copy of that?
No. You approve payment of those bills, so certainly. But yeah, we can get that to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
How long did you get it from the sixth?
That is all I have. When I suggest.
Okay. Any questions?
Always, I'll pay for it.
I had two on the wellhead. Last month, I believe, there was some fine notices that were going out, and I see that all the properties have inspected. I'm assuming that was because of those and, you know, fines were incurred, or do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I think, I think the reporter last month, if there's only one, that one had been addressed, I think. I know it's been addressed, I definitely know. And that one was in Shrewsbury Road.
And then you said that three that had been grandfathered were still closed, which brought that down to fifteen total.
That was grandfathered, had shot.
Yes. And do we know if these have been closed? What the reason was, like, was it because the property was transferred, or the owner just decided to do it, or?
Two of them, I definitely know the property was transferred.
Okay.
The third one, I do not know.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions for Todd? Okay. Uh, we have, Todd, do you want to go into the zoning amendments now, or do you want to? Only because I have that behind yours. Or you want that to do with old business, or would you want?
Uh, let's see here. Why don't we, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Now that we're talking short. One of the, I think the chairman mentioned earlier, one of the, that is signed is a goal for two thousand nineteen was to work with staff and go through our zoning ordinance to put together some proposed amendments. The intent of that was not to necessarily change the substance of the zoning ordinance, but to mainly, we've accumulated a file over the last two or three years of things that we picked up, like, you know, next time we do an update, we should address this, and some things for clarification. So we did do that, that was presented to the board, I just gave them a brief summary. And it's up to the board where they want to think about it a little more. If they don't want to do nothing about it, or tonight they can, if they wish, they can do kind of like we did with the resigning request, forward it on to planning commission for their review, comment, recommendations. But basically, I'm just going to quickly go through, updated several definitions, added a couple of definitions. In the ag district, we added small schools that would accommodate up to no more than fifty students. In all zones townshipwide for accessory buildings, we require a ten-foot setback from the property line. And for swimming pools, we require a twenty-foot setback. Throughout the ordinance, we're proposing that that be reduced to five feet, which is pretty standard in most zoning ordinances. And we're finding that especially in the newer developments with smaller lots, you know, a shed ends up in the middle of the backyard. In all zones, under the standards for use section, we're just going to add some additional language where we reference that signs need to meet the requirements of the SAVO, as well as the Township's sign ordinance. Again, we just added some clarification regarding the calculation method of burst density. Don't remember that conversation, so we tried to add some language, just so everyone's clear and understanding that. We deleted subsection twenty-seven dash one one zero four, which is traffic impacts. That's actually addressed under the subdivision land development ordinance, so it was redundant in the zoning. Added some clarifications for the number of parking spaces required for certain uses, including those for adult communities. And staff has proposed that garages be eliminated toward the counting of parking spaces. Just because we're finding that while there's garages, people are usually using them for storage and really not putting a car in them. The outdoor storage, we currently address recreational vehicles, but over the years, we've had a lot of complaints about trailers that just have trash sitting on them, or, you know, what have you. So we added utility trailer definition and add to the outdoor storage section. The, under the variance requests, under the special exception, there's language that states if you get a special exception, you have to act on it within six months. It talks a little bit about the permitting process and so forth. Under the variance section, there were no time limitations. So we add basically the same language, and if you brand a variance, you need to act on that within six months, or it becomes null or void. And because it didn't make sense to us, if you have a variance, a variance is a hardship. And if you have a hardship, you would think you probably need to do it sooner than you do a special exception. And the last thing is, there were a couple of sections in the ordinance where there was a little conflicting language regarding the, how long a zoning permit is valid, six months or a year. So we made that consistent with the six months. So that's what's being proposed in general.
What's the definition right now, I think we may have changed, with the repairing buffers? That's been defined now on the definition section. How's it read now?
Um, I can pull that up, I don't have it right in front of me. What basically stated was, uh. Yeah, what was initially proposed was, and again, this is just a definition, it's not, not some mulch on it. But initially, it was proposed for an undisturbed repairing land adjacent to a water source and other bodies of water for the purposes of stabilizing banks, filtering pollutants to runoff and to providing habitat for a variety of wildlife. I did have some individual conversations with some board members, and we'll probably look at deleting these two words.
Probably?
Um, yes, because I don't make that final decision.
Uh, it's going to be proposed.
All of my mind will be these, Eric, come on.
I fully support you, Paul.
Oh, you don't support me? I know. Don't personalize this. You're getting yourself a bigger hole.
But anyway, it does make sense to remove undisturbed repairing, because, you know, that can be a play on words and be defined differently. So basically, the repairing buffers, it's simply land that's adjacent to a water source, and I think the remainder of that definition can stay intact.
We, one of the things that came up in staffing not too long ago, right, it's in the SAVO, was that we have no standards for brightness of outside lights?
Yeah, I apologize, sorry. Give me a list of a couple of things that accumulated, that is one of those. Because there was a couple of other things I wanted to go over with you, and I'll do that later, but you're right, that was one of them. But there is a section, but it's not where you would expect to find it. But it is in the zoning ordinance, we did find it. Maybe that needs to be moved or something. But it talks about, you know, at the horizontal line.
So we do have some standards then? Okay, good. You also had in the beginning here, and I'll say that because Phil's here about his request, and we kind of look at the expand mixed-use building and where it might be allowed. And I think, I just had a quick, long conversation with Phil about something else today. And I think what he said is that this isn't something that has to be in any hurry, but it probably should be some work type sessions to kind of work through this, and try to include that in what we're doing right now. Correct?
Yeah, I agree, yeah. I think that if everybody understands the concept and we can develop language that everyone's comfortable with, it makes sense. But just to throw something in there, I'd see whether there'd be a fear of, you know, not doing what everybody wants to do. So I think it's going to take some work, and I more than willing to meet with staff and show them what concepts are out there and where things are born, and what I think we've had. Because it's already in the interchange then, but if you read the language, it's impossible to do.
Yeah, I'm going to just set that up. Okay. I think that's the best way to handle that. I guess, what's the pleasure of the board? Is it to take some time? We all have many, many, many pages, you know, in our computers now that list all these changes. So do you want time to go through them? Do you want to move this forward at this time? What's the, what's kind of the pleasure of the board here?
Do you want to look at moving the section for the lights that you were just talking about?
Yeah, well, I would suggest if you're ready to move it on to planning commission, make that just one of the conditions. The planning commission, you know, take a look at that and get their recommendation on moving that. I think it should probably be moved, I agree. But I think you could make that part of your motion, you know, keep things moving. And have them look at that in addition to.
What's the turnaround time for planning? Will that get back to us by January, or will it be from now?
Cut off is going to be today.
What time is cut off?
So it actually would be, would be heard by planning until February. Doesn't sound like this. No, January, January.
Yeah, December cut off.
January up here.
So it'll be back to.
Up here, January, and it could come back to you then, if they get through it in one meeting, it could come back to you totally as scheduled.
Are you thinking for the timeline for the next two weeks, or?
We're going to just do that, so.
Okay, completely satisfied.
Yeah.
So you're going to wait a month or two, or until you work on that?
I don't think time is critical. Yeah.
So we would need to make a motion to send this to planning and have them look at the lighting and remove the.
Well, have them review what staff is kind of just.
Yes.
In addition to the.
And move the.
But move the mixed-use building, or, excuse me, remove the mixed-use building.
No, I think the plan is to do nothing with that.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Um, so moved.
You second it?
No, 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 that was my motion, would you like to second?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's my motion, but I'm going to do that and say it's your motion, if that'll help your frame of mind.
All right, I make a motion to send the proposed changes to the planning commission and have them be sure to take a look at the lighting.
Second. Motion and second, any further discussion? I know it doesn't port like much on these two sheets of paper, but there's a whole lot more than that. It's a good summary, Todd, and I think we all appreciate it, help us get through it without having to go through. How many pages is in?
Two hundred and twelve.
I'm sorry. We have all of it, with all the changes, but.
It would have been a late meeting. Have we had to go through each one?
No, I think we were good. I'm still going to look through it, but if there's anything.
Yeah, I mean, if there's anything that you pick up or have a concern with, I mean, it can still be addressed at the planning commission.
Did I get a second?
Yes.
Paul second.
Thank you, Paul, I'm sorry. We were discussing.
So you still can review, it can be passed on to the planning commission if you have concerns or questions with that open?
Oh.
Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, we will pass that on to the planning commission and see how many there is, see how many some pages there is. We always give an opportunity for a solicitor to say something if he would like.
All quiet on the master front.
That's the thing you can say. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you for being with us, Todd, Steve, we appreciate that. Wish him good luck in his hunting process. All right, we have, are there any questions on the engineering report? I guess just for the sake of especially chat, because he lives there, we could just quickly go through where we are on line road. Survey has been completed, from what I see on the report. The application should be in process for dirt and gravel program road funding. Hoping to submit for permit this month, is what I'm seeing here. And if that's done, and we obtain a permit by March, then I guess there's a structural adequacy that has to be done in May. We put it out forbidden May, which for new construction, June through August. So I think that's what we've been able to do so far. Are there any other questions or comments on the engineers report? I think everybody got a copy of, it's in this lane, it's issued, can you try and get that copy of the tree? Yeah.
Read action.
Read action, thank you, plan. Okay. Any comments on the maintenance? I just had asked Todd earlier if we could include cleaning store work rates, especially along Main Area, there's always trash just collects there. Winter's coming, so if we keep them from freezing over so quickly and so.
I think we should invite that to the shopping center and say that this is a continuous problem, and maybe they can make sure they're cleaned out regularly.
I think he's talking more of the ones that are toward the railroad tracks.
These are the railroad. These are.
Yeah, these are ones over there.
Yeah, these are pretty much.
I do like that.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Yeah. There's some, I think a lot, a lot of that's the stuff coming out of field, right?
Field, yeah.
But a lot of it's.
It's more and more sprinkled.
A few plastic bottles.
All right, that's fine. I thought maybe this stuff is being turned in by shoppers.
No, I don't think it's.
That's fine.
Quite a good thought. Um, anything on the zoning codes enforcement, city enforcement report? Again, I commend Keith and Todd, this is a pretty lengthy report, but it's kept up to date and continually trying to handle things that are violations or just kind of an ISO on the township. I think it's in good hands. Other questions specific, have a chance to progress on? You good? We'll move on to emergency management, if Stan wants to say. That's a good report there. All right. We have a planning commission and zoning hearing board report. No questions there, we will move on to, I guess subdivision that we've touched on. Now, there's a budget summary in there, is there? Oh, that's not yet, we have supervisors' comments before that, sorry. So we are at the area for supervisors' comments. I made one or two, along with Todd, we attended the quarterly scheme of meeting. I believe from what Stan says, it's interesting to note that New Freedom might have some interest in joining the group, and that would be good because of the whole, we just found it's in the area together. And I did take the opportunity to, I guess, attend a webinar on creative, creating green public works facilities, since that's something we're thinking about. I just saw everything cost a lot of money, but when the time comes, I'll be happy to share. All these webinars are available anytime you want to look at them, as far as I know, you can go back online, and we have paid the fee to have unlimited access to a year's worth of those. And I've joined with Todd in some of the correspondence with White Cell regarding the development, regarding the rural surface. regarding the road surface and some other concerns. So comments, supervisors would like to make?
I have one summary comment. I know, I've said it before, that there's thirty-five townships in New York County and like the York Valley, they're all copper-like, they were strong here coastal townships, now they're pretty much gone, fully developed or partially developed. And Sudbury Township and Springfield Township together are two of the most progressive townships in protecting our resource, particularly our farmland. And if you turn around in a heartbeat, you got a new member of the board, new members of the board, if you all of a sudden become development, is the name of the game. And we have a growth boundary, and once we develop out that growth boundary, everything that's in the growth boundary is done for development, pretty much, that's actually commercial. And once that gets filled in with development, which won't be maybe ten, twenty, but I don't know how long it's going to take, but what the township is basically, is through developing based on our term of thinking. It's agriculture, it's open space, pretty much, it's our growth boundary. And that's going to take an effort on part of this board, a new board, to make that last. So that's definitely one of the few townships in New York County that does the right thing. And I'm not sure where I'll be at the time, but I may, I may be observed from some higher place, but we're basically a lower place, I don't know. Good luck.
Okay, anybody else, comments? We move on to old business. This is just informative, Todd, the budget summary.
Yeah, we actually...
But we need to act on that.
We need to formally act on it.
I guess that's a pretty important thing to do with it.
Or no one gets paid.
Yeah, just quickly. Just quickly. Let's see if we can get out the audience. We have, we have, there's seven funds. We have our general fund, which you know a lot of our roads and maintenance and labor and so forth comes out of. The rest of these funds are restricted funds, they can only be used for the specific uses. Liquid fuels is state aid money that we receive and can only be used on certain road projects, culverts, road equipment and so forth. Then we have the recreation fund, which is where we receive the $2,500 for every new building lot goes into the recreation fund, that can be used in the parks. Sewer fund is the Sisland sewer project. We have a fair tax fund we talked about earlier. The streetlight fund only covers, I think it's thirty-eight properties down in Southern Farms, and that's an assessment that is based on road drainage. And then we have the fire hydrant assessment. And those funds go to, we get billed by York Water Company as well as Glen Rock Water Company for rental of the fire hydrants. The way this summary is, this is what we project our fund balance to be on January first, and this is all funds combined. This is what we project our total revenues for 2020, total expenditures, and where it says surplus or deficit, that is just matching the revenue and expenditures for that particular year. What you see then here at the bottom is what we project our fund balance to be on December thirty-first of next year. Where you see, actually on just about every one of these, we're spending more than we're taking in, but there is a legitimate reason for it. The general fund and liquid fuels funds are two funds that the remaining flooding road projects will be coming out of. So that X, the deficit, is not a deficit of our operating revenue versus our operating expenditures, it's capital expenditures for that particular year. Recreation fund is somewhat similar. We have, some of that funding will also be coming from general fund because that's a matching grant. We have a $580,000 project that's going to happen in 2020, and that's a purpose for reserving funds and building those up so when you have those capital projects. So while we only anticipate taking in that much, and some of that is grant funding, we expect, you know, our expenditures to be over $294,000. However, we'll still have a couple dollars left in bank at the end of the year. And again, these are restricted funds, they have specific uses, so it's not like we're going to save, save the funds, you know, to help, you know, clean the streets over here in the general fund. Same with the sewer fund, again, this is the Sisland sewer project. I think in the year 2021, we project that this fund will be closed and is going to be moved over to the general fund, because the term of that note is for thirty years, and there is no way that we could bill those folks for fifteen, the note is fifteen years, but we're allowing them to repay the township over thirty years, whereas we pay an interest and so forth, because there's no way we could, there's no way they could afford an annual sewer bill at what that would have cost, because each of those homes was around $18,000 for hookup in the Sisland. Fire tax we talked about, streetlight tax, again, we're working for a year or two here to get this fund balance down. There's no reason to collect more funds than what we need, because the only thing that can be paid out of that is the med ed bill, so there's no reason to build that fund up and keep it high. Same with the hydrant, you know, here we're running ahead a little bit, and while that looks like a hefty fund balance, everything to keep in mind is, we don't start seeing that revenue start to flow in until April or May, so we need a little bit of a fund balance to carry us through those first months, so. I just wanted to explain that someone sees, you know, we're spending nearly a million dollars more in 2020 than what we're taking in. It's either for capital projects or the fact that we're using reserve funds for the specific use that they were intended for, and again, recreation is a capital project. Nonetheless, at the end of the year, we will have positive fund balances with projected fund balance of about $3 million. The significant or major projects should say for 2020 is, we're going to update our comprehensive plan, which we currently have with Ramford Borough, Glen Rock Borough, Schuressberry Borough, so we're going to do an update of that. We have, we will finish up all of our bridges and culverts from the floods of July and August of 2018. And we're going to, mentioned earlier, the recreation expenditures, there are going to be park improvements at Miller Park, about $580,000. We're going to be building some picnic pavilions there, horseshoes, and there's also going to be playgrounds put in for the youth. And the other, I think, major undertaking we're going to do in 2020 is, those of you, I think most of you have been attending our meetings regularly, we hired a, an architectural firm consultant to do an assessment of our maintenance building. Everyone's familiar with that, I'm sure, it's been there since 1976, I believe.
Few years.
Yeah. It is in poor health, needs some TLC, and so there was an assessment done, looking at everything from, you know, electrical plumbing, heating, just the structure itself, you know, the roofing. And we had estimate, so we had an estimate to update that building and bring it up to standards. Then we also had an estimate to bring that building up to standards and add a twenty-foot addition for the entire length of the building. Is there, they're just out of room, because the township, there is going to be more equipment. And the third thing that we had them look at was a cost estimate to just replace that building. And the difference between updating the building and the addition, I think, was about $200,000, somewhere around there, $250,000 or something. So the board had discussed it at our budget meeting, and we did budget funds for 2020 to hire a consultant, an architectural engineer, to design a building, to replace the one that's currently there, and it would be placed behind that building over the ball field. And there's some folks might think, why are we taking a ball field out of commission? Talking to our field scheduler, no one even used it, did schedule it in 2020, so that one hasn't been used. But the other problem we ran into is where else would we put it on that property down there? Talked about maybe putting it, you know, that backs up against eighty-three, you can kind of drive in that way, but with the elevations, if you're familiar with that area, you're going to have to either dig deep into that area or else we have to have it elevated. So it made the most sense, but probably one of the other more important things, I think, from a fiscal point, is the board has decided that when they hire this architect and they're going to take a look at that, they're going to also have them take a look at moving our offices down to that same site and part of that same building. And then the intent at this point would be to sell this building, because we already utilized about forty percent of it, and that's counting this room once or twice a month. The entire second floor has never been used. This room back here is not used for anything, or the two-bay garage isn't used for anything. We have, I think, eight heating and cooling systems in this building, and it gets kind of costly to upkeep this building. Not saying at the time it was, was a bad move, I don't think it was, because you're certainly outgrowing down there, but, you know, the board just felt that if they're going to do this, probably they'll take a look at consolidating everything at the same time, so. But then also, shortly for that, but the second floor is a finished office area, so a conference room, it's got pantry, it's very well done up there, and so it'll be, hopefully, to help us sell the whole building, all of this. And I know over the years, it's been discussed about why doesn't the township rent out that space on the second floor? Really three, three issues come up. First one is accessibility, ADA, we don't have any elevators in the building. Second thing is, is the way the heating and the cooling system is set up, in order to really make, to generate enough revenue to pay those utilities, you're going to have to have the whole upstairs full, because there's one or two thermostats that control the whole second floor, not each individual office. And the other thing is, the assessment office, the tax offices made it very clear to us, and I went through this with a former organization, if we were to rent this out to a private business or what have you, the township would have to pay county and school taxes assessed on that area that we will be receiving income. I rambled on and off.
Okay, time to move. All right, any questions from the board? Let's go.
Aye.
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 By the way, did we have a motion? I'm just getting into, did that practice?
Is it?
Okay, now I'll make a motion that we approve the 2020 budget summary. I'll make a second of it. Now we'll vote, for real, not practice.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. My vote's the affirmative, now we now approve the budget. Thank you, Todd. The next item is, I guess, the contract for SPCA service. I personally have a problem with it, because I don't like a one-sided contract term at us where essentially they've said, we used to give you these services, but we can't do it anymore, but there's no offer for any type of reduction in the amount we're paying. I think there should have been some discussion with this before they made that. On the other hand, I don't know, there's a lot of choice, because nobody else offers these services, and I don't think it's worth spending money on an attorney to try to review it and reach some conclusion. We talked about this earlier today, Steve and I. So if I were to approve it, it would be very reluctant, and I would want that message to go back to them, but leave it up to the rest.
Want to call them or do we tell them anyway? Just a letter or something before we approve?
Yeah, you can table this till January, they're not going to shut us off January.
And do whatever.
Yeah, they won't pay me by the end of March, so we've got a little room there.
And you want to just let the audience know that they will no longer be investigating cruelty to animals, but they say they will be providing a field services agent that assists the local police department.
Which we don't have.
Right. To transport animals who are abused and neglected. They're looking for a humane officer, but they don't have one yet, and they're changing the hours for emergency veterinary care for sick and stray animals to Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, eight to four, and Tuesday and Thursday, eight to seven.
I don't know what they were before that, so it wasn't twenty-four hours, was it?
No, but I think they had longer hours on more days than they do now at memory service.
So essentially, they lost, they lost an employee who was their basically police officer, and say, boy, you know, so we won't provide that to you, but by the way, you sort of pay us the same amount of money, so. It's not a big deal, and just to me, isn't the way you should conduct business, so maybe one of the things we could do is, through you, have at least conversations to let them know we're a little disappointed at that.
Not just disappointed with our downfall, but... Reduction of services should also come with a reduction of...
Exactly.
This monopoly of fees, so to speak, because, like I said, nobody else is offering these things.
So if the board feels that's a good approach, I would make a motion that we table this and ask the manager to let them know our disappointment, and shouldn't there be some reduction of fee, because they say they're going to hire persons or staff on, but my experiences or services reduce itself in return.
Sure.
So that would be my motion.
And they don't have a person, so.
Right. So they're not paying for that person.
What high residents did they serve this past year?
We didn't. They got a quarter. Their director, executive director changed to...
I don't think we got a...
...tailor top them, but here, over the first six months, the numbers were very, very low.
Very, very low.
And I don't know if they have issues with accounting where those animals came from, because if you recall, the previous year, you know, it was only showing, I think, two, one, I think it was one to be questioned, and they recognized that some of those animals, they were attributed to Schuressberry Borough, and they were actually Schuressberry Tax, and so.
Very few, very few.
Yeah. This year, at least according to the reports they submitted, I would say it stands seventy-five percent.
Three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars a year for those that might be interested. There's a motion, is there a second? Is a second thing, question? We'll vote.
And this is the vote to table, correct?
Table, and have Todd make contact with them.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Todd? Okay, we've got five votes to the affirmative, so we'll put that in hot hands for now. And we have the land conservancy, conservancy. I start that, but I've looked through this about three times now. I'm still not sure exactly what it is the conservancy wants to do, and it's an awfully complex administrative bylaws to go through.
And it's something the county does very well, I would, not just the county, land conservancy, but also there's another private group that also takes in requests for conservation, so I think we have a conservation plan, it should be a general fund that people can contribute to, go to anything, like parks or...
When I read, when I read this, it looks like all this... When I read this, it looks like all this was for the donation of easements. Why, I have a call through a land conservancy, it wasn't donating land, and it wasn't donating money, and I didn't see where they were getting, what was their source of funds? Because they talked about painting directors, having a paint director, they talked about paying for various things, but I saw nowhere where there was any provision to raise money. So, I'm just kind of confused. I guess for the group there 10 years ago, was that about the timeframe?
At least.
The board established a land conservancy, but nothing's ever been done with it. So, there was a question raised in the community as to, are you ever gonna do anything with this, or should you rescind it, or should you make it more active? It seemed like a pretty complex thing to deal with, to me, without really even understanding exactly what its purpose was.
It reminds me of a local farmland, the local York County Preservation Program.
Yeah. Not very well defined.
Right, but I mean, that's the closest thing I can relate it to.
So, what we've been asked was to look at this by, I guess, the original author of this, who was a board member at that time, and I didn't see where the board had anything to do with this. This group was off on its own, it wasn't the board that let this die, it was the conservancy itself, because they were, as far as I read this, they were self-existing, didn't answer to the board, or to call room meetings, so if this died, it died because this group let it die. You know, not that I see where the board had no involvement with it, so I think to the extent that they tried to throw this back to the board, it's not where it belongs.
But I think that the question was, what was raised was, you know, in order for this to be put in place, the township passed a resolution.
Correct.
Creating.
That is correct.
This group. So, the question was raised is, are we wanting to do anything with it?
But it wouldn't be up to us to do it.
Well.
We don't appoint anybody to it, somehow they fit their own boards together, as I ran it.
Yeah, but all at the end of the day, the board supervisors makes a decision whether it exists or not.
If they create it, then we can eliminate it, or retire it. Or stop doing it.
I mean, we have a resolution in the book that has this in place, but to the best of my knowledge, it's never, other than the initial steps to get things in place.
But then somehow they did a lot of work on the documentation, and to get an IRS ruling that it was, that it qualified as a 501(c) or whichever it was. So, I mean, there was a lot of work done, but nothing ever resulted from that. So, the question is, I guess, to the board, do you want to keep this on a shelf somewhere? Do you want to just rescind it?
If it's not doing anything.
I mean, is that, that's your question?
It seems unnecessary.
I mean, we have a county, York County Land Preservation Program.
And there's a private organization that takes in donations of farmland, so you've got those two organizations that are very active.
And if somebody really wanted to donate land, and this was easements, I think not land, but they could certainly do it to the township.
Yeah, I think that's the thing, I don't know, it's a question, a legal question, but I would think that you wouldn't necessarily need to have this group in place at the local level. If I wanted to come in and donate an easement to Shrewsbury Township, or donate land to Shrewsbury Township, I think that could be done individually between the township, which we require in the conservation board.
I mean, I think, I think the people who put it together had a good goal in mind, and maybe things are a lot different now if they had any others offered the same things 10 years later than what was offered here.
Yeah, but we have a conservation fund, very simple, you expect for these purposes, and, you know, that's it, it's just a one-page, one page idea. If somebody wants to give money locally for a park, or whatever, they give to the conservation fund, you get a tax, you get a tax, but that can be very simple.
You could do that just right now to the township, and just have a fund set aside, and there is a record.
We have a fund set aside, that's fine.
Do we have record of the current directors?
I'm not sure it's active at all.
No, it hasn't.
Because according to the first page, it said, in the gray section, it's, "No fewer than three directors, and no more than none," and none but.
There are now.
Exactly, it looks like it's just a...
And there's no fund, right? There's no, I don't think it was ever even put together initially from what I can recall.
Yeah.
We can follow it up.
I think it's not my turn.
Go ahead.
What?
You want to make one?
No.
But I think what we would need is, if the decision of the board is to retire this, the motion would be just to authorize, or even just a consensus, I think, as you can find out, I don't think we need a motion, consensus for me to prepare a resolution to rescind the former resolution, which went out until the end of January, so.
Is the person who brought this to your attention going to be upset about that?
I think so.
I do, okay.
So, I, you know, I'll be prepared in advance.
What was the intent, to try to resurrect it?
Yes.
Just to, Mr. Sheldon called you and asked you where is it, what, you know, like, why?
Anything ever been done?
Okay, but because there are other, potentially more effective ways of dealing with it, or things that are already in place in the area.
Yeah, I think at the county level, and I think he's still accomplished the same thing, without having an additional board or committee.
But they would have had to have gotten their own board together.
Correct.
It wasn't something that the board supervisor should have kicked off. They got all the authorization to do it, I don't think it ever happened.
Doesn't appear.
Well, I'll say, if you want to do something, if you have a simple conservation fund, money can be spent for following conservation purposes, and that would be a substitute, a very simplistic substitute for this, and wouldn't compete with the county at all, so some future times, consequently, consider a conservation fund, you can set it up.
So, now we're...
I guess at this point, everyone's okay, prepared to resign?
Yep, I think that's a consensus. Okay? All right, we're coming close to kick time here. We have store owner operations agreement, it's just the standard agreement. A second.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, we approve the store owner agreement?
Aye.
We will vote.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on that, my apologies.
Aye.
Aye.
My votes are the affirmative, that's approved. The following thing is, I guess, just a, the borough being thoughtful, and asking for input from us on something they're planning on doing. We don't really have any legal issue with it, but I think they said, "What do you guys think?" And Todd's gonna put that up there.
Yeah, for, those are familiar, this is Toddler Road, so square trails out here, and down here is Rutter Strawberry Square. As many of you probably know, and do as I do, this is kind of the shortcut, you know, you can come down, and come down through Covington, and then I think that's Farm. If I'm understanding correctly, there's a gentleman that can help correctly, they're going through a process where they have a traffic calming committee in the borough. The committee has been looking at ways to slow the speed of traffic in this stretch of Covington, as well as lessen the volume of car traffic.
By request.
By request, okay, yes, thank you. So, where you see these red lines, or, is my understanding is where they're proposing a speed bump, and my understanding also is that when you come down, what is that street?
Crosswind.
Crosswind, off of Toll, to Crosswind, and the normal flow of traffic, you can turn right, and come down here, and turn right onto Farm. That'll be fine. Where it's a little different is, am I correct, you can still make a left at this point, but when you get up to this intersection, and there's another photo up, there's going to be an island, when you come up to, off of, this is Crosswind, this is Covington. So basically, when you come up, this is going to be closed, it's going to be an island there. So, really, you're only allowing access for those homes.
Don't we want to be southbound?
Correct, yes, southbound, yeah, down here on the side. Really, anyone that should be heading up this direction should really be anyone that lives on these streets. And again, this is all within the borough, and they were just asking for our input, if we had any questions or concerns.
I mean, I guess to me, because we talked about this a little bit earlier, what happens when that car gets up there and can't go any further? It's gotta back up, it's gotta turn around, or it's gonna sneak through the intersection when nobody's, when nobody's coming. So, they're gonna pick the closest driveway to probably turn around in, I don't know how that would go over, or they're gonna back up and be dangerous. Would they, is there any thought of just making that one way? And that's what you're really doing, it's a one-way street, where you can't get out. So, I guess my feedback would be, what's gonna happen at that intersection? It just doesn't seem to work to me. I don't understand why.
Yeah, I don't understand why.
What do you do when you get up there? You know, you can't, you're at the end of the road, these kids.
It's supposed to be a traffic circle?
No, no, no. Traffic's calming. This'll be, as Tony said, southbound, so if you're coming off of Toll, you know, this'll come down through here.
That's Rutter's down there.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, really, with what's proposed, if you make a left here, you can come up here, and you can go back this street, and you go up to this last home, but this lane will be closed, it'll have an island. The only way you can get out
Doesn't make any sense at all.
On the crosswind is if you sneak out through.
You're already slowing it with the humps. I don't understand why you would restrict people from getting to Crosswind off of Covington.
We're gonna have to stay and speak to us in a capacity other than the board's management.
Yeah, I gotta be careful here. So, I'm Stan Walters, I'll put my huge, very borough council member hat on.
Very good.
So, I might draw the eye or somebody waiting. I'm a member of the traffic calming committee, so I'll speak then. So, without seeing all the raw data, the number of vehicles, remember your own surprise when you found out the number of vehicles driving through.
Good point.
Okay?
It's a good point.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
There's a lot of traffic through here, and it's, it's in the middle of the day. The greatest likelihood is that these are people who drive all the time. So, yes, there may be some people who are gonna be surprised, they missed the signage, because it will be signed.
So, there'll be a sign that says, not a through, or no exit, or something.
So, in the beginning, there may be some confusion, but I think once people realize that if you're going northbound, you wanna go to Toll and take a right, and not cut through the development, it's gonna, there's two things, it's the volume and the speed. So, the humps are gonna help control speed, and the block at the end, northbound, is gonna help control volume, because people will not go through it that direction.
So, you'll have a sign that says that, and you figure after a week or two, everybody knows what you can't get through.
And before any of this happened, we spent a year devising a scoring strategy, so when members of the borough population would come and make some requests, and say, you know, they're speeding past my house, there's an entire traffic calming plan that was devised, and this is actually the first case to be used by the calming committee, and be put through this plan, and we didn't pay, you would know, but we had a study done, and they proposed a bunch of different remedies, and these things are all allowed by PNDOT, so we're not sacrificing our fuels, the fuels money. And it's being done all with community involvement, so survey cards have been sent out, and we have to get a certain percentage of the people on the route, and the roads around it, to acknowledge that, you know, they agree to it, and there will be a public meeting. So, it's not a done deal, at this point, this is what is being presented by the traffic calming committee, as their, as the best suggestion.
The town committee, you appreciate their involvement, we had something to say, but you spoke to the issues.
I would still say, you know, despite meeting, go ahead and, you know, reflect your concern, but I think the concern about what to do at the end is a good one, I certainly didn't think about that, but present that as an idea.
What if you just did the speed bumps, and try and let that ride first?
That doesn't take care of the volume.
There's a lot, I think you would, because people aren't gonna wanna go over the humps.
Right.
May, but what's the, are there any other accidents, and there was problems? Tell us a little about that, because I haven't heard.
I don't wanna say too much, because I'm not really here, but I would suggest that you ask for the maintenance, for Ryan Communication, and I'm sure we have no problem sharing that.
What's it? Okay.
Okay, let's have a little insight into it.
Thanks, Stan.
So, just to clarify, the roads are, the houses are in the book.
This is all Shrewsbury Borough.
It's their roads as well.
So, all they're doing is being a good neighbor, and saying, "What do you guys think about this?" But it's all their.
Yeah, we are the other part of Covington.
Correct, when you turn right on Farm, just go up there on a half a block or so, and...
Right, when you get out there, Lloyd, Covington.
And actually, on...
What do we need to add?
We don't, they're just saying, this is what we plan to do, do you have any comments or concerns?
Yes, they're just, they're just being, it's very close to the township board, as a courtesy, they're making us aware of it, and if we have any questions or concern, we have a problem with the sharing of that, so.
Okay.
For letting us know.
So, we're here.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Other comments?
Are we sending a letter, or are we...
I'm not sure.
Showing up as their borough name?
No.
It seems like it was a form of a signal.
What I have so far, the thing I heard the most was a concern about when you get to the end of Covington with the island.
Right.
What impact is that gonna have on their residents, or they're gonna use their driveways to turn around, you know, you're gonna have people sneaking around the island, how do they control that? I mean, that's what I...
And my big thoughts for them, just to think about that, but that's the only, I mean, I understand why they're doing it, and I do use that shortcut frequently, so I understand exactly why they're doing it, and if I lived there, I probably would want to do something too, I just wouldn't wanna be in that first driveway, you know, for the first couple of weeks.
But I was playing, unless I hear otherwise from the board, I'm supposed to put something writing.
It seems like it's just the courtesy from them to us, letting us know what's happening, but we don't do anything.
We don't need to, but they did say in the letter to us, that they asked us, they just asked, "Please let us know your thoughts," so we're letting them know our thoughts.
Yeah, if we can, I'm curious about the data as well, so I would wanna include the concerns about the do not enter island area, and then also the data behind the plan of all, or if you stay a little more.
Okay.
Southern regional could do somewhere.
Well, there's a police car sitting in that picture. Oh, if that was space, or... Okay, we good with that? And I always include our thanks for, you know, sending out all the... Okay, with that, and I always think, our thanks for, you know, sending it on to us and giving us an opportunity to comment. You look like you're ready to say something.
I mentioned to you earlier, if I can bring up under old business, I just received this prior to the meeting, it's an application for payment. It is a final application, and it's the one and only application, and this is for payment to Mar Allen Concrete Products. This is for a contract that we awarded probably three months ago for flood repairs, the undermining of Baltimore Street Bridge site, so that works been completed, everything's been inspected, the engineers have signed off on it, and the total of the contract is $75,573, and that's the cost, or the amount of the application for payment. So I didn't want to have to have these votes wait another month.
So without the system, what, what we thought it cost?
Yes, it's a contract that's...
It's equal to.
It's equal to, okay.
A bank motion, we approve that for payment.
Second.
Third?
No, we can move to the second.
It has already passed. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. I go to the affirmative, you're right, it has passed. There's some correspondence in there, I don't think it's anything of any critical instrument, opportunity for questions if there are any of the correspondence. And otherwise, we've reached the second opportunity for closing public comments, if there's time to like to address the board at this time. If not, after our motion to adjourn, I'd certainly encourage everybody to stay and take all hands and have some cake with our motion.
The phone club says, "Sure."
Return. Return.